Okay, I have 601. And we have a form present and a call to the Upson County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We'll start off with an invocation. Will you plan Gilstrap to do that for us? And then we'll do the pledge.
Let us pray. O Lord, our King, our God, our Father, your glory shines throughout the world. We commend to your merciful care this community, that we may live securely in peace and be guided by your providence. Give to all an authority, the wisdom and strength to know your will and to do it. Help them remember that they are called to serve the people as lovers of truth and justice. Almighty God bless those who hold office in this county, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote the general welfare for all. This we entrust to you through your son Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we amend the agenda to add an executive session personnel.
Do we have a motion to add an executive session after a public comment?
After public comments, yeah.
By Commissioner Watson.
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bates?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
All right, okay. That amendment, do we address the agenda?
I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. Recommend for approval from Commissioner Ellington.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Watson.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bates?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Next item of business is a public hearing for zoning text amendments. An ordinance on Upson County, Georgia to amend the code of Upson County, to amend the M1, M2 sections of Upson County zoning ordinance, to rename the zoning districts to better reflect the permitted use, to add certain technology-related permitted uses to create the technology overlay zoning district, to add definitions to establish technology overlay district standards related to permitted uses, development standards, design guidelines, administration, and enforcement providing for repeal, conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'm in.
Have a motion from?
Second.
And second from Commissioner Jones. All in favor? Any else? Okay. We have a presentation.
Are you on it?
Yeah.
All right, well, my presentation is basically part of that memo, just a little more legible through PowerPoint for the audience. But anyway, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, on May 12th, the Planning Commission met, and Mr. Slade Gullidge, the Executive Director of the IDA and County Manager Tinsley approached them and explained their desire to create an overlay district for tech industries, tech-type businesses. This would be a tool in the toolbox for the IDA and for the county to recruit these sorts of businesses, something that they felt that we didn't already have. So they suggested this to the Planning Commission, and then at their June 9th meeting, they looked at the proposed ordinance that you have before you tonight, and they recommended approval unanimously for 40. They had a missing Commissioner that night. Mr. Tinsley supplied with Mr. Gullidge the basis for the ordinance, so I just built upon that one. The overlay will serve places outside the IDA property if you approve this as it's drafted, because we integrated the language also in the M1 and the M2 zoning districts, so that we didn't have to worry about an overlay over any M1 or M2, it would already be part of it, that this overlay was created for other areas. I believe specifically what they had in mind is potentially AR zone property, which would be larger parcels that potentially could accommodate these high-tech businesses. So I'm not going to go through the draft ordinance unless you've got specific questions, but what it does address is a definition of data center. We suggest changing the name of the M1 and M2 to more accurately describe the fact this is industrial and technology zoning also. Still keep the M1 and M2, but lengthen the name of it in that we're adding technology-based businesses and the related uses to the permitted lists of the M1 and M2. Then we're creating this technology overlay zoning district, which would superimpose over the zoning district that was under it. So you'd have a double zoning. Basically, what this would do is give an option. Yes, I still have my AR zoning, but if I have the opportunity for this particular tech business to come in, if you get it approved ahead of time, you're already approved for that second zoning too on top of the AR zoning. So you can maintain your AR uses if you have this overlay on it and you get the opportunity. Specifically, the discussion at the meeting was that we would do this overlay on the M1 and M2 for the IDA, which is not necessary if we make the M1 and M2 amendments, then we would only need this overlay district for non-M1, M2. There were two specific parcels brought up that have the same ownership, very large parcels, I believe in the hundreds of acres, and so that's where this overlay would come in. In the ordinance, you'll also see a list of permitted uses within the overlay district, development standards, design standards, and of course administrative, administration and enforcement types of uses. That concludes my staff report. Mr. Chairman, you've certainly got Mr. Gullidge signed up to speak, and if you've got any specific questions on the ordinance, I'd be happy to address any of those issues or concerns.
Any questions? We're done. Okay. So we'll go into the four, and we have Slade.
Slade Gullidge with the IDA. Really want to appreciate you guys for considering this tonight. Thank you for your wonderful explanation of the ordinance. Again, we appreciate y'all's looking at this. We feel like it's a really good tool in the toolbox. Appreciate your favors considering. Thank you.
All right, I have looks like three other community members signed up. Is there Jeb Grace?
I think he signed up for, and didn't know what we were signing up for.
Okay, what were you trying to sign up for?
I thought that was for like the animal shelter.
Okay, we can just move you over.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Okay, and then sort of Regina Grace as well, okay? And then this is last name seems being Canaza?
Canopus. Again, I didn't sign up to speak. I thought it was for the Humane Society.
Okay, we'll move you over, it's fine. Okay, so we have no more individuals signed up to speak for or against. No further discussion?
Do you allow questions if you didn't sign up?
No, sir.
Ask a question if you didn't sign up?
No, sir. Close.
I'd like a motion to close.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Ellington to close.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bates?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Now, this... Does it require multiple hearings or?
This is the second one. You can entertain a motion to approve it. I'll make a motion to approve as it's presented.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Watson to approve. You'll have a second.
I'll second.
Commissioner Ellington, seconds. Any discussion? Vote.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bates?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, ordinance is adopted. Next up is public comment. Okay. So the first person I have signed up for public comment is Tess Graves. Hi, just need your name.
My name is Tess Graves, and I'm Jerry Doggett, and I want to brag on you guys. I don't think y'all get bragged on or nothing. Y'all put in a great system out there for balls, where I used to play ball back when I was young, and that's all new. Y'all did a good job, and y'all done a lot to keep up our county current, and we want to say something. I have an eye problem.
Okay.
I have to have my words read.
Okay.
So I want to address the issue that is close to a lot of people here. The Upson Animal Shelter, as a volunteer and as part of the rescue transportation team, we see the areas of this shelter that needs a lot of attention. We need to update the building for the comfort and safety of our dogs and cats, and if anybody's been to the shelter lately, you need to go. And I personally invite all of you... The shelter is 40 years old now, and... I personally advise you at any time. And it was dominated to the Upson County system, believe it or not. The Humane Society used to do it all, but we don't do it anymore. We don't got over too old. We don't have volunteers.
Okay.
Another issue is setting spay and neuter laws into operation and licensing and fines on people breeding more than one litter per breed, per year. I think we're all in agreement there. Our county needs to address these issues now.
You have one minute, Mr. Doggett. This is a one-minute warning. One-minute warning.
Too many euthanized, and we need to change things, or better. Happy to hear, happy to hear our animal lovers and with the Humane Society. Everybody needs to be a Humane Society member. We need all the help we can.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next up is Ms. Peggy Farrell.
Hi, I'm Vice President of the Humane Society and Rescue Facilitator and Shelter Volunteer, and we seriously need some spay and neuter laws passed. There's too many of the same people turning in, dog after dog, litters of puppies after puppies, and with no repercussions, so there definitely needs stops on this backyard breeding. It's not fair, and rescues, there's no way they can possibly save all of them. It's just, I work many hours trying to save these dogs and horses and cats.
She works hard.
It's not easy.
I know.
Stay up late hours doing it, and it's tough, and I know these rescues personally, how hard they work and, but the shelter, going back to the shelter, I agree with Tess and Jerry on that, they need a lot of improvements. The shelter's old. Cory didn't do a great job.
Yes, they did.
We got a great staff out there now, and they really are caring and work with animals too, so they don't get enough appreciation. But we seriously need something done about all this breeding, you know? It's just out of hand. They need to have licenses or go by what the Department of Ag says, one litter a year per household. It's not that way. They're coming in in droves, and it's not fair to them to have to die, born to die. And it's heartbreaking, see all these senior dogs too turned in. I think that affects me worse than any of it at all, the sadness of them trying to help them, but you're limited when it's so bad, so, but something has to be done, because it's mental stress on the staff at the shelter too, and we don't want to lose none of them, so if something can be worked out, we'll appreciate it, because we work hard as volunteers and a lot of hours, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Next up, Lisa Bragg.
Hey, how y'all doing? I'm here today on behalf of Upson County Shelter and the Upson Humane. Ms. Peggy, I've been passionate about animals all my life. I believe in taking care of your animals. I realize sometimes people's health, and sometimes they have to move, and the areas where they go, they cannot take them with them. But Ms. Peggy and the others, they've been overwhelmed with a lot of cases of animal cruelty that's unnecessary. If you don't love your animal, you don't want your animal, then I feel that you should give them the opportunity to have somebody else to be able to love and take and appreciate it. As they said, their building is very old and needs a lot of updating. I've actually been in there, and I was like, wow, I was very shocked to see with such limited space that they have, all the animals that has to come in there, and some of them has to be more than one in one little area. I would appreciate it if y'all could please, you know, from the bottom of your heart, think about your little girl, little boy, your grandchildren, loving animals and would love to see them get took care of, and then there's these others who don't care, to help upgrade this building and give them the necessary funds that they need to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Ms. Tammy Boyle.
Tammy Boyle, 245, Charlie Jones Road. Get my other set of eyeballs on. So I'm here today to be a small voice of support for the animals, the employees, and the volunteers at the animal shelter. If I say to you the number 25-423, what comes to mind? Well, most people don't know this, but this is the number that represents the number of animals that have gone through the intake process at the shelter since January the 1st. That's 423 in 202 days, or 144 if you don't count Saturday and Sunday. On average, it's about three dogs a day. Since the shelter has only 16 dog runs and nine cat capacity bins, we must be adopting, rescuing, or euthanizing a whole lot of animals to transition 423 animals into and out of the shelter in 144 days. Change is needed at the community level, and it starts with our local government. These animals and this animal shelter problem is not new. I remember the same problem in 2013. Conversations need to happen at our local government and with local enforcement officials to address pet overpopulation enforcement and other shelter issues like space and the quality of space that's provided. In reality, how many and how often are the existing animal ordinances that we have enforced? Hear me when I say that this is a community problem, so I would like to challenge the community to do better, to be better. I challenge people to spay and neuter their pets, to lower the number of unwanted litters produced in our county. I challenge people to stop backyard breeding, but I would also like to challenge the Board of Commissioners to consider ordinances that require spay and neuter, or a voucher program that would help and promote spay and neuter, and double down on enforcement of animal ordinances. Our shelter cannot adopt out or rescue its way out of pet overpopulation or strays. It only leaves euthanasia as the option. We must do something different to get different outcomes. Euthanasia isn't the answer. Prevention is what we should be aiming toward. Thank you.
Next up is Denise Cleveland.
I'm here on behalf of the unwanted animals here in Upson County, and I agree wholeheartedly with what Peggy and her team has said, and what I would ask each of you to consider is there is an answer. There's a way out of this. It's not a dog or cat problem, it's a people problem, because the residents of Upson County are not taking care of their animals. And I can tell you that this shelter is an open house for all these pet owners to bring their animals to be killed. They're not being put to sleep, like the old saying goes, they're being killed. And I did Google some information on the computer today, and I'd like to leave this to you gentlemen. Our neighbors in Bill County, they have an answer, and if they have an answer, we have an answer. But guess what? We need your help. Peggy and her team and the people who love animals in this county cannot do it without you. So please, when you get a moment, read what they're doing in Bill County. Let's put some laws in place, some ordinances in place. You can do it, and we're asking you to help us.
Okay, next up is Amber Samples.
Good evening. I'm an animal lover. I have five cats and one dog. They're all spayed or neutered. I also feed three feral cats behind Dr. Tommy Cora's office that I trapped and had fixed and got their shots. I want to suggest that the animal shelter consider opening on Saturday and closing on Monday, so that potential adopters who work during the week, during the hours that it's open, would have an opportunity to adopt. On one occasion, I decided to adopt a kitten. I called the shelter, they were closed on Saturday, happened to be a Saturday, so I drove to Greenville to adopt a kitten, and he's 10 years old now. And I just want to thank the people at the shelter for everything that they do. I follow them on Facebook, and they are desperate every day to save some animal or some animals that have been turned in especially by people that maybe can't afford to keep them anymore. I don't know, but they're euthanizing too many, and they need help. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Pua, I'm going to butcher his name, I'm sorry. Canagas, is that right? Canagas? I'm sorry.
Was that a...
Yeah, she was on the other.
She's on the other list.
Did y'all want to speak of that?
Oh, it says not speaking, I'm sorry. All right, and then Patty Harrington?
No, I didn't want to speak.
Okay. Okay. Jeb Grace?
I'll speak for a minute.
Need you to come up to the right or to the left, so they can hear you in YouTube land. It's Jeb Grace.
Yes, sir. I live at 107 Wilson Way, and I just want to say I support any changes, any improvements to the shelter, and hopefully they can get that law passed, you know, for the litter requirements. I worked for vets off and on all my life as a veterinary technician, and I've seen so many put to sleep. It's just really horrible, cry at every time. I don't know if there's any laws that concern people dumping animals, but just a few years ago, my wife and I witnessed somebody throw a box out in a ditch, and we followed these people home with the puppies, and we immediately called the police department, and they went in and questioned the people, and they said no, that they didn't do that, although they had a dog that was obviously had just had puppies. And they couldn't press any charges or anything, he just, he said that all I can do is take them to the shelter. So I don't know if there's any laws that need to be updated on that kind of thing, but it happens all the time. My neighborhood out there is just run over with feral cats. It's just really horrible to see what's going on. So just want you to know that I support Peggy and her team, and you know, anything we can do to improve the shelter. I have three rescue dogs now myself, and just can't take anymore, and two of those are special needs, and you know, it requires a lot, you know, just to keep these dogs from getting put to sleep. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, and the last name I have is Regina Grace?
That one, we can.
Okay, you're good? Okay, that concludes... Okay. Yeah, so that concludes all the public comments. Commissioner Ellington's asked to be recognized.
Yeah, I just want to say first to Peggy and all the volunteers that I see on social media, Facebook, I recognize all of you, and I know a lot of you and a lot of you I don't, but I do want to say thank you for what you do. Ms. Peggy, I see you on the weekends and at night, you know, talking to people from Tomlinston out of Tomlinston, connecting people, and...
It's a tough job.
I just don't know if I can say thank you enough. I mean, you're taking on a lot, okay? And you're not being, you're doing that from the kindness of your heart. It's not like a check, you receive a check every week.
That's right. It's not a pay job.
But thank all of y'all. I do appreciate y'all.
I say it right here in the heart.
And keep the Facebook thing going, because it works and people see it, and you know, and if that's what it takes to get the people, keep doing it.
Yeah. What little tatty, good comment to us. Means the world.
It does, because we're getting some better.
Yeah, we, most of it is done.
But I like that, bro.
I think my family's even reached out to you to help, to help level with you.
Thank you very much. If y'all can have something to add, we'll do our best to do that.
I mean, it was a pretty theme-oriented public comments tonight. Is there anyone else who wants to say anything before we close out?
Well, just because it's on this list of ordinances, you know, to address, we did update our animal ordinance a while back, and I think tethering, that was one thing I was pushing, and we were able to change that, and it sounds like that's being enforced from our code enforcement, so we're making a step in the right direction and can do more.
Right. The spaying and neutering is a must too. That's going to control this population.
May I speak? Can I ask a question, Commissioner Brew, in regard to tethering? That has been near and dear to my heart, and I was so excited when I read in the paper that you guys were going to vote on a tethering law, but it's my understanding that the tethering law decided to fall under animal cruelty, because indeed it is animal cruelty. We all can admit to that. So with that being said, if you see a dog chained 24/7, if they have a food bowl and a water bowl, and they...
a water bowl, and they have an old doghouse that offers no heat or air, and you call the shelter and you say there's a dog chained up 24/7, Adrian will tell you, my hands are tied, because a tethering law was not passed. So I'd like to bring this forward. Mr. English, I know you were present when that was addressed, and if a tethering law was passed, Adrian doesn't feel like he can enforce it.
Okay.
So I would appreciate you guys looking into it.
So I'll say this. First, I appreciate everyone who came out tonight to speak. I appreciate your commitment, and I appreciate you voicing your concerns. That's why we're here, that's why this is for. Those of y'all who know me know I have a better half at the house who is, you know, all over...
Yes.
Taking care of animals. So we hear you loud and clear. You know, I can't make you any promises tonight. No one up here can make any promises tonight, but we, we got the message, all right? Appreciate you. Can I get a motion to go into...
Executive session.
Executive session.
I might close. Go into the executive session.
Okay, I got a motion, Commissioner Elton, to go into the executive session, and a second, Commissioner Jones.
And if they want to, you know, because...
Yeah, we will be in the executive session for, hopefully not long, but could be a minute, on personnel matters, and then we'll reconvene the meeting. Anyone who desires to depart, you know, more than welcome, if you're not here for the rest of the agenda.
Do you want me to come back or wait?
We don't have to have a vote, right? We just need to vote. Just all, all of us.
We need another meeting with the...
Also, just, so just let the process...
We have information...
Is the truth?
All right, we get a motion to reconvene the...
So moved.
Director. All in favor? Okay, we are back from our executive session. At this time, I will announce that we have not filled the role of county manager yet. So can I get a motion from someone as to what would be appropriate?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Allen Salter as our interim county manager effective today.
I have a motion by Commissioner Watson to appoint Allen Salter as interim county manager effective today. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Ellington.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Congratulations, County Manager.
Interim.
Interim. Okay, our next item on the agenda is old business discussion and consideration of a beer and wine package sales license and application on file in the Commissioner's office from Shaheenness. I hope I said it right. Roy, on my office, South Side Grocery located at 5775 Indian Trail, Thomaston, Georgia. Is there a presentation or anything?
I've got a couple of questions.
And I do have one comment.
Okay. So you are the petitioner?
Yes, sir.
And my question is to Doug, did everything get straight squared away?
Yes, sir. The intern Earl and I went out there today, we took pictures. So we had some dilapidated signs that are gone, the grass needed to be mowed, and there had been a lot of trash that was outside the dumpster, and that's all been put in. So they cleaned bill of health this morning.
No code violations currently.
Correct.
And I believe that's why it was taken.
Right, it was, it was. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the beer and wine license.
Do you have a motion from Commissioner Jones to approve the license? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Biggs.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Okay. The consent agenda has the minutes from the June 28 work session, minutes from the June 24 regular meeting, minutes from the July 2 special call meeting, minutes from July 10 special call meeting, approval of a contract from J.J. Morley for the auditorium repair, and approval of the FY '25 three rivers area agency on aging contract for services, and discussion and consideration on the purchase of sheriff's vehicles. Any discussion?
It should just be approval, I apologize.
Okay.
Doesn't care.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion to approve that agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Do you have a motion from Commissioner Jones and a second from Commissioner Watson?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes, but I'll abstain from B, the June 24 meeting, I was not in attendance.
Motion carries.
Move on to new business. First item up is discussion and consideration of environmental health fee increase.
So someone was supposed to be here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. She did submit this letter requesting that the board approve these fees. They have already been approved by the other counties involved in the district. And so now they're asking for your approval. And the board of health have already approved it. Go back to the letter as a...
I might as well just go ahead and, you know, they haven't raised their rates in, I don't know when. So bring it up to the 20, you know, 2025.
Yeah, it looks like they're just bringing us in line with our neighboring counties, Pike, Meriwether, and Lamar. Spaulding's a little higher, but... Yeah. It's just in line with everyone else. So I have a motion from Commissioner Jones to approve. Do I have a second from Commissioner Biggs? Any further discussion?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Got a lot of paperwork tonight. Trying to stay organized. Okay, next item on the agenda. Presentation and consideration of mid-year budgets. Who's up first?
Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is, I think the next three or four items, or mine, I'm going to use the area here as a podium because I have so much paper along with this. Every year, our fiscal year differs from the state's fiscal year. And so their fiscal year ended June 3 of this year. So they're on their new fiscal year 2026. We didn't have all the budgets timely enough to get to you for approval for last budget meeting. So they're still operating this month with the approved budgets from last year. Agencies that I'm referring to are listed as you show them above. And you've already approved a public defender's contract, and there's no increase to his budget. So that really is already done. No adjustment that we'll need to make to our budget. The Griffin Judicial Circuit had a very small increase in their total budget. As you know, we're part of that circuit. Nuts and County is assessed or not assessed, but we participate in the budget, their budget, based on the number of cases that we have. And I forget what the other metric is, it may be population.
Right.
And so it was a very minor increase, and that was really related to some compensation increases with some of the employees within the court system. The public defender could not make it. They're all at a meeting or conference, so she could not attend. Her budget increase is primarily, again, and they actually sent an email, the vast majority, about $13,000, their increase, or their salary, or their budget increase request, is for increases in salaries for two of their investigators and one victim applicant. So that's the majority of the increase in their operating budget that they're asking for. The Pine Mountain Regional Library System is technically a joint project with the city. And so we share in that funding based on a ratio as we derive from our net digest or our joint projects net digest. So that factors out to about roughly 68/32 in percentage. She is asking for an increase of approximately $15,000 this year. Her budget increase is related to primarily healthcare for, that's employer's portion of healthcare expense. And she made note in the letter that she sent us that approximately $13,200 of it was related, needed to cover employer's portion of Georgia healthcare insurance, which will increase, and she gave the figures. A small amount of it is related to increases in the TRS contributions for retirement systems for their full-time employees. So that's really the majority of it. We will share about $13,000 of that increase. If you approve, the city, if they approve, they would pick up 32% of that total budget. I will say that's something we did note in the past. We cover 100, so under the Pine Mountain Regional Library System, there is a library in Yatesville. We're covering 100% of Yatesville. It's not part of the joint project, so when I do the calculations. But that's really, in essence, what I had to present to you for approval.
Have a question. The county manager recommendation, it looks like those are pulling from the approved 2023. Is that accurate?
My goodness. It could be.
Yes.
Mistakenly. Yeah, ignore county manager recommendation. Requested, that's a column that you want to focus on, which is the county manager recommendation. I apologize.
So what's requested is the recommendation?
So what's requested is a recommendation. The other three years are there for informational purposes to show you in total the increases in the budgets over the past three years.
Alan, I have a question. I mean, I'm just curious. I mean, so the Griffin Judicial Circuit, they're only going up 2.9% for an increase of $5,900. And all those people are covered by health benefit plans by the State of Georgia, is that correct?
I don't know about Griffin Judicial Circuit. I don't know that they would be covered under State of Georgia health benefits. I couldn't say positively, Alan. It could be part of Fayette County's healthcare plans.
It's a blend of both. So you have state employees, and then you have other employees which are on Fayette County's benefit plan.
Okay, the reason I was asking is because there's a lot more employees there, and there's a lot less employees at Pine Mountain Library, and their increase is double that. And that's just, that library thing is, it just keeps climbing. I mean, it's a small number now, but...
Let me ask you another question. Is that just for the employees in Upton County, or is this their system-wide?
This would be... That's a great question. It's our share, I'm assuming. I don't have the actual number of employees. My assumption was it involved employees for Upton County and employees that operate the Yatesville.
So it's just Upton County?
Yes.
It's not over the Pine Mountain region?
No, sir, it would be over the whole region. I don't know the number of employees. No, sir, I don't have the number of employees.
Well, how much of our health benefit go up?
13%?
So that's 11, 12, 12.3%.
Now, I can come back to you with those specifics on the number of employees.
Like I said, if I'm just comparing to, I would think Griffin Judicial, you said they're a blend, but I know that the Health Department, obviously, Department of Family and Children's Services is not a blend. Those are all 1% of state benefits, and I don't see any increases in.
Part of it has to do with the allocation, too. So their budget, Griffin Judicial Circuit, may go up, but how much is allocated to us versus Spaulding, Fayette County? A lot of what's driving that is how many court cases. So that's another variable that's involved there that can influence, you know, what we get allocated. I mean, we've been allocated a lot more in previous years, which is sort of an anomaly to me. They only want up $5,900 total.
I'm not disputing that. I was just trying to see why I didn't see that carryover for any benefits being pushed through these other departments. But I mean, I'm assuming a lot of that's just our portion of the funding.
And important to keep in mind, a lot of, you know, what you're, what we're asking the board to approve tonight is our subsidy to these. I mean, that they have a number of other funding sources, and that is inclusive of the Pine Mountain Library System. So there are some things that drive the cost locally, but generally, that's our subsidy to the whole system to run these two libraries.
So what is the function of the Pine Mountain Library System? Well, the regional system that operates, manages these libraries in the counties that are associated with the total region. So, you know, they're a public library system. So to maintain the libraries, to maintain the books, support minimum level of staff to keep the libraries open. So we do, we are part of, you know, part of the funding source, the city, and the Board of Education contributes, albeit a smaller amount.
And this doesn't, this doesn't include any building maintenance grounds, does it?
No, it doesn't.
We own those properties.
So we own those, and given that it's a joint project, whenever we incur, say, a capital expenditure for the laboratory, we would share that with the City of Thomaston. So, yeah, so this is just covers like your basic M and O, if you will, for the libraries.
Mr. Chairman, I may for Commissioner Biggs. The Pine Mountain Library System consists of Butler, Greenville, Thomaston, Manchester, Reynolds, Talbot, and Yatesville. So that's the...
Okay, any more questions for Alan?
So, just going through her actual document, I didn't have this, she has five employees here at the Thomaston branch. It looks like two employees that are part-time only at Yatesville. Well, yes, that's correct. I don't want to take too much time reading through these paragraphs to figure out how many are full-time and part-time. Definitely the branch managers will be at the library here in Thomaston. And it's in, you can actually look at this and see what their annual salaries are.
Right, and all I will recommend is, in the future, is that, you know, anytime there's an increase in the budget, you know, they need to pay your... the budget, they need to play here in the future. You know, we're responsible to the citizens and we're not being responsible. We're just up here writing checks. We need to be able to ask questions. And I know, I'm not putting down on you, I'm just saying in the future moving forwards, if it's an increase, we need to be able to ask questions because when I'm asked, I need to have answers.
Absolutely.
Generally, you know, they've been here, but nobody showed up tonight.
Well, that's me. We, I was trying to get this pushed on for last month so we could, everything would work out just fine for the end of fiscal year. And so I was working to have at least, you know, some money from Pine Mountain and the district attorney's office. Was struggling with the district attorney's office even last month. But, you know, when I put these numbers together and I thought, I use judgment and said, you know, when you look at the percentage increase and look at what, you know, the county is looking at in terms of our healthcare costs, I'm like, I don't know if I want to, I don't know that I need to ask the director to come in and explain it, but I definitely will in the future. She's had some bigger ask in the past and she's come. That's off of, you know, what I asked him to do. DA just simply wasn't available.
All right. So it's a total adjustment of $33,690.
That's correct. Well, that is correct. That is the.
Well, no. Yeah, that's ours.
That's ours.
Okay. Any more discussion, any more questions? Can I get a motion?
Mike, please move forward.
So a motion for Commissioner Jones to adopt the amended budgets. I have a second.
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Watson.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Motion carries. All right. Next up is 2025 budget amendments.
Yes, sir. So the budget amendments are necessary, one in part due to what you all just approved. The other is we've had some to address the increase in healthcare premiums that the county has experienced and I prorated that for half a year, the adjustment. Also, we had fairly sizable increase in our workers' compensation insurance related to volunteer fire personnel. So I wanted to incorporate all those now, get, you know, the budget amended or at least get it to you all for approval. And I, just on the first page, I just summarized the impact to each of the funds in terms of the total increase. The biggest part was driving, you know, the increase in the general fund, obviously it's healthcare plus the workers' compensation increase. Then the rest of the pages, I basically break down, you know, the actual adjustments or amendments that can be made to not only the agencies, but workers' comp insurance. So you see I added in and I rounded some of these numbers up for budgeting purposes. We needed to put about $85,000 more in for workers' compensation expense for volunteer fire into the budget for 2025.
What was that based on, mine? And largely related to a single client?
It's quite, it's quite a bit. It's a lot of information here, but it's really, if you like, if you flip on it, it's just an allocation to each of the departments within each fund. And I will tell you, this is an out of one, the term necessarily, a budget precaution. But we actually may have actual experience. We probably will come in below budget, which is what we would want to have. But I thought we, you know, I wanted to make sure at least we did amend the budget to capture the increase, just in case. Because what the variable that impacts you is that when people have life-changing events, employees do an ad dependence. What you expect or budget for can change dramatically, particularly within an department. And we budget down to the department level. That's what you're responsible for in improving is down to that level. So a smaller department that has one or two persons that change dependency coverage, it makes a big difference to their total budget. Have any questions?
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Jones has a second.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Next item is discussion and consideration of a contractor for the baseball concession stands and batting cages.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as you all are well aware and certainly Mr. Tensley can speak a lot about this, we went through a process where we basically cut the total project into two phases. Phase one was to completely renovate one of our fields, new turf, everything, new fencing, new backstops. And all the rest were addressed in terms of land, you know, landscaping, so to speak, to get the fields to drain off properly. So we've accomplished that. So the next phase, two was to demo the old concession stand, build new concession stands, put in some batting cages, et cetera. And we were at one time using another entity, company to put this out to bid for us. They went through two cycles of this and each time came back with results that were just too, too far outside of our range in terms of our budget. So we, in this case, we decided to do this in-house. County manager thought it would be most appropriate to do this on a solicitation process would be request for proposal. So we put that request out there as we typically do, you know, put it on the Georgia Procurement Registry, et cetera. We did have, I believe, I've got it documented here, four, I believe, contractors that did show up, but we only had one contractor that actually submitted a proposal at an estimated cost. So this is a little bit different than a bid process where we had it completely, project completely specked out. We do an invitation to bid, contractors come back that are interested, they submit sealed bids and typically the lowest, most responsive bidder gets the work. It's a little different. So in this case, we, you know, what we're recommending is that we obviously go with this particular contractor and then we will continue the process. Well, the contractor will further define, we would work with them in further defining or working out a little details of the scope, creating all the specific plans for what we want to have done, addressing any issues that may or may not have been addressed in our original proposal. So there may be, from the estimated cost, there may be some differences in cost that may arise because of those changes that we may make. Or there may be things that come about that we don't expect, particularly when we start tearing down a building and moving some earth. So I've got in there, the estimated cost proposal from the contractor was $1.2 million. And what I added to it was, and actually was a recommendation, but I added an additional 25% or approximately $295,000 as a contingency.
Question on that. Are we going to be carrying the contingency and managing it? It's not going to be carried by MacRae?
We would carry that, right, right. So anticipation or expectation is we do this project for this proposed cost or lower.
Yeah, right.
But if, you know, if something does come up or we decide, board decides, hey, let's add this or let's do that, we've got some room and we have a budget established, like, okay, we can't add anymore. We can't join further.
Yeah. And to speak on the, you know, lack of participation, I guess you'd say, that the design build process, I think, is a little unique in the, in the world of, you know, construction. Not so much for the larger firms. They deal with it all day, every day. But your more local, smaller firms, they aren't really inclined to do that approach. So I think that's why we had one bidder.
And Mr. Chairman, I would like to add that our original estimate for this project was exactly in this range. So this was the range we were looking at when we were using a performance contracting delivery method. But then we kept getting, we kept getting hints from potential bidders under that system that the, that the building was overdesigned, that, anyway, we were in the $2 to $3 million range when we were getting proposals under that delivery method. So the change to the design build method has got us to where we initially were with our project budget.
And so it's 1.476 mil and then that is our cost or that is the total cost?
That would be the total cost, throw in the $295,000. No more. Hopefully.
I'm saying that includes the city's 40.
Well, that does include yesterday. I didn't bring that up. I'm glad you did. This is a joint project. So we are looking for support from the city to help us with 30, roughly 32% of that cost. I think I put that figure in here, which would be roughly $427,000.
So it would require them to approve it too. I did, Alan was very diligent. He kept them in the loop the entire time with email communication. I did go visit with the city manager about this project yesterday to let them know it was on our agenda for approval tonight and that if, if the board decided to award that, we'd be asking them to do the same at council.
And what I'm getting at is, so if we agree to this, we agree to this 14476, all we've done is agree. Let's start working if that company, the final numbers come back to us if it doesn't make those final numbers, we have opportunity to walk away of that.
Correct.
See, their proposal was 1.1.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I guess maybe some clarity in terms, if the city were not to approve, I don't know if we have that moved into this request, but.
We need to come back to the board.
We'd have to come back to you.
One last, I did present this to the, to the rec committee too, to get some input on that and to put it simply, they're excited about the project.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Watson makes a motion to approve. I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Ellington.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda, discussion, consideration of a contractor with, with the Drake Building renovations for the tax commissioner's office.
Yes, sir. So we used exact same approach on solicitation, using RFP, that type methodology. We went through the entire process of submitting. We had, make sure I've got this correct, we did have, should highlight it, I can't point to it. We had, I believe, four, or five, actually, I think we had seven different contractors show up. We received two actual proposals. So we evaluated these proposals. We used a scoring matrix for those that went along with what was in the RFP and how we would weight that, those scores. So, you know, there was a weighting given to obviously the cost, the design, the experience of the contractor. So we had a team of folks that included myself, county manager, that went through and did, you know, an evaluation or assessment and scored based off of the proposals that we received. The overall scoring came out very, very close. It's less than a point, one tenth of a point. It did favor our local contractor, Flint contractor, in terms of the scoring. The total score was like 8.92 to 8.80, Flint being 8.80. There is some large of both contractors appear to be experienced. And so what we, staff are coming to the board to recommend, Flint Construction for the project, and we use a similar approach. I just used, I'd say a 25% contingency. It's same again, we will work with the contractor, if you all approve, to further define the project drawings, et cetera, and make sure that everything is designed and built as needed for the tax commissioner. So the total estimated project cost for Flint Construction was $347,000, proposing additional $100,000 for design modifications, et cetera. To put it at $447,000 total budget for the project.
Same question on the contingency, we're holding that.
We even hold that. Do you, anyone have any questions about the contractors or proposals that were submitted?
Well, I looked, I looked at it. I don't feel I got a chance to look at it. Did the tax commissioner get a chance to look at it?
At the proposals themselves? Because there's the, I mean, we haven't gone to design yet, so that would be the next step.
So I see who you scored out, but I noticed that the one that was the lowest score did not include a vault in their plan.
A what?
A vault. And the other one did include a vault and that was part of the proposal. So would we select the one that didn't meet the criteria?
Well, that's.
Well, I've got something else to throw out on that one too. The timeline, the timeline was Flint could do it by January, CTC?
Cornerstone.
Cornerstone.
Yeah, cornerstone. They would be finished by September.
With a vault?
Yes. So it'd be, you know, September, October, November, December, January, you know, we're talking five months difference. Their timeline was bam, 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 bam.
Anyway, I don't know how much y'all got to look at. I looked at it before I came to the meeting today and didn't get to spend a lot of time on it.
I do think this is a good opportunity to give the local business some work. It's not a big project, but it's a meaningful project. So I do think that goes a long way.
Well, I understand that, but if, if the vault's missing in his bid, I don't know how much a vault costs.
Yeah, I don't either. I, like I said, I only looked at it today. I don't know what we got put in the folder or so on. I'd be more inclined to hold off if.
Well, it sounds like it needs to be a question back to the lowest bidder, make sure he didn't include it and if not, how much is it to include?
I will say that, well, just for your consideration, if you look, look into them carefully, I mean, I thought that the local bidder had the design drawing was on point. And I know that the architect that was involved had conversation with the tax commissioner in coming up with the design.
And it was the original architect who built that building or designed that building?
It was, he's doing the lab.
To renovate it.
To renovate it.
Yeah, yeah.
To renovate.
He's old, stressful, my man.
But I mean, it could be something missed and I didn't catch that about the.
Yeah, I, I saw that footnote on their proposal that it didn't include that and you have to come back and it would be more money. So, you know, I'm, I'm inclined to make a motion to table this and let's go back and look at the, like I said, I only looked at it today. I think we need to look at it a little bit more.
Mr. Chairman, in full disclosure, Commissioner Jones was one of the evaluators.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm saying, you know, it was, you know, it was tit for tat, but I did not catch the vault missing. But the timeline was just so skewed to me. Sure, local people, but we talking from September to past January, these people are going to get it done, so.
And I think one last thing to consider, and I was conferring with my colleague here, we anticipate that the assessor's office will be moving in three or four weeks, which will then leave that facility with only one department in it, so it's a loss of efficiency for every month we punt. Even if it's 10 or 15,000 dollars, it's 10 or 15,000 dollars a month for every month we punt. So just that one month makes up the difference between the two proposals.
Well.
Something to consider, I mean.
I don't know, because I don't know what vault situation is.
I will say too, that I don't think we're going, if, if we redid this, I don't think we're going to get any more attention on this project. A lot, a lot showed, but I think maybe the size of it, you know, one of these folks are out of town.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't proposing that we send it back out, I was just proposing that I would like more time besides using my little laptop screen going through this to actually be able to spend some time looking at it. And I only spent a few minutes, but that popped out to me right away to, I think, well, one of the issues is money, and if you don't have a vault, that might be an issue, so.
Mr. Chairman, did I understand you saying the RFP required or was asking for a vault to be included in it?
Not re-RFP, but the footnote said, hey, we did not include the vault.
Right. I mean, if the RFP required a vault, then it would not be a proper bid if they did not include it as well.
Yeah, it's, I don't have it in front of me, but it said it did not include the vault, something about spacing, and we'd have to go back and re-look at it and renegotiate. That's what, so.
And I think you're going to have this problem anytime you do this design bill, because basically, they put me and you and me, us three in a room and you go, okay, well, we want you to do this, go out and figure out, well, it's kind of like telling somebody else how to design and build your house. You get three contractors, say, go bring me a design. I mean, well, basically, we don't, I mean, can't, you're not comparing apples and apples.
Right.
It's no way to compare apples and apples to that.
Yeah.
So, but, I, 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 I mean, I think that we kicked this and we twisted this, we need to move. I mean, if, if, at the end of the day, you know, we don't even really have drawings, good drawings of measurements, of a blueprint of what we're, we're asking to get here. So what is our commitment to this if we choose a contractor tonight to move forward this without that? What is our risk here?
Well, I don't know what the risk is, I don't know what a vault costs, because like I said, I have to come back and renegotiate, and like you said, I think we're not going apples to apples here. And if, if the RFP said it included a vault, then I think it should include a vault, because they specifically put a footnote in there and said, we did not include the vault.
If he didn't include the vault, then.
Well, I mean, then it goes back to the fore.
Yeah, I just don't know. I mean, the lawyer just told us that might not even be a good.
Well, the RFP required or, or, you know, specified a vault, and there was a bid that didn't include it, then that's not a bid. I can look it up.
Yeah, I mean, we just need to know before we make a vote.
I would be surprised if it said that, so they would include.
I don't recall what was in there.
They would know that that would be a proper, should know.
And again, I didn't get to spend hours looking at it, and I have my high-quality government laptop looking at it, so.
I'm going to give the chairman my laptop.
Well, do we need to get your laptop?
Just saying, I, I, where are these at?
Where can you?
Trying to radio.
Ben and I do fine when I.
Y'all kissing.
If it makes any difference, we got a vault. All they got to do is tear it out. I mean, we'd like to keep it, but, you know, I'm like, I would love, since it's my office, I'd love to see some blueprints somewhere.
I don't think that they're there yet, right?
Well, basically, what we're doing at this point is establishing a budget, and I'm out of protocol, so I'm obviously, but we're just forming a budget, right?
And then design is the next step.
That's correct. So we definitely.
Yeah, that's, that's what we would engage.
If we got a vault, we can bring it, they won't tear it out, haul it over.
It might cost more than a vault though.
Well, the question doesn't.
All fear is that we'll get vetted during the design process.
It would be nice to have a bigger one.
But we do have a contingency in here, right?
Yes, yeah. Well, for, correct, 25% of it.
All right, so we just need to know if it's, if the, if the vault was required for them to put in there. I don't want to vote on something, and then the lawyer tell me, well, y'all voted on the wrong thing.
If it's a design bill, I think I ain't got nothing specific.
There's no drawing, tracing.
Yeah. The other person put the foot.
I don't know, one had a vault and one had a footnote said we don't have a vault, so that just caught my eye, I'm like.
That's, I'm not going to get it because I can't, if you can get onto the network from the wireless here, so.
I don't want to have a full page.
Is, is there a copy of the RFP in the commissioner's packet?
There should, well, I do think that, like with Flint Construction, they included portion of the RFP, actually, I've got sections over here.
Yeah, but we don't have.
What page is it?
It would be page three of that RFP, begins talking about the responsibilities, and then of design, or the contractors.
Which contractor?
Like, if you go to Flint Construction's proposal, it includes a copy of the RFP, and it starts talking about the responsibilities of the build team, design build team. There's some information about the HVAC systems, LED lighting, fire protection.
Mr. Chairman, may I address, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
May I address our facilities director?
Sure.
Paul, do you remember if that spec was in it?
That spec was not in it, we talked about it in the hallway.
Okay. There's, there's, there's the answer.
That was not mentioned.
So that's why they mentioned it?
They mentioned it because it was a discussion at the pre-bid?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a difference in price of the bid.
Yep. So, go to the project description.
We got a motion on table right now. Yeah, you made it, you made a motion to table.
I was, I was thinking about. Yeah, that was my one concern. I have a lot of time piling up paper down there on computer.
And this is, is this the same one you're looking at, Alan?
Yes, ma'am, that's it. And then on page 13, we've got the basic drawings of the layout of the office with footnotes in.
Mr. Chairman, I would, you never should have seen, but if one has it and one don't, and bids are 15,000 dollars per, I would have to think that, I would want to think that it would have cost more than 15,000 dollars.
A vault.
You got two bids, and a bid on a vault, and you said it was a vault.
Mr. Chairman, if you, on my, where did you see that footnote that said it does not include a vault?
Well, I had it on my computer.
I see where they indicate.
In their, if you go to their proposal, there's probably exclusions right after the proposal.
Oh.
There we go. You got it.
She's got it up right there. Keep going.
itemized. Okay, so, no, that's references, I'm sorry.
Let's scroll down.
It was further down.
Yes, scroll down. Wait a minute, whoa, 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 whoa.
It's right there, both, both.
Okay, RFP describes 2,300 square foot of office space. We can only accommodate 2,000 square foot and cannot arrange space for all requested preferences. Vault space is missing from design. Any change to proposed layout will require a recalculation of proposed pricing.
That's what I read.
Is that an email? Was that an email?
No, that's on their.
That's from page three of three.
Yeah. It's page three of their.
I don't know how to watch. I hate to ask this, but to move this meeting forward, can we move this to the end of the meeting and finish with the rest of everybody else?
Alan, me?
I'll make a motion to move this to the end of the meeting.
You don't really need a motion.
Okay, we'll continue.
Mr. Chairman, may I also make a recommendation? There is a, there's a gentleman in the audience that is on a, on a quest to get to the UK tonight.
Okay.
And I think he's the second to last one from the agenda with, I would just say, with the board consider jumping to, and I don't have the, my laptop's now not syncing to the. You don't want his laptop?
James, hook me up on his way out. Okay, is it a moratorium exemption?
Yes.
Okay.
And is this, is this the Crest Highway one? So our, our staff would recommend that in light of their travel plans trying to make it to the airport, that the board might consider jumping to that one.
All right. Any objection? Okay. So who's up for that?
Yes, so, and I, and I apologize, I forgot your name, sir, but if you wouldn't mind, so just a refresher for the board, yes, staff's not making recommendations on these, this is simply a citizen appealing the terms of the moratorium to discuss a hardship that has been created by the moratorium, and it's, he's seeking a hearing with y'all to try to explain why for this particular project, we would lift the moratorium and then send him through the subdivision process. With that, I'll turn.
Okay, you're, you're Rob Ogden? Okay.
Appreciate your time, thanks for letting me jump ahead, apologize for that. A visual aid here, but this is, we bought 474 acres on this parcel, and we want to build two homes on the other side of the lake, and because of the moratorium, we can't do that, and we're asking for an exception. It's not a subdivision, it's my personal home and my daughter and her husband.
So you're just going to parcel off for the home 45 acres, is that what I read?
Yes, sir. Just because that's another requirement, you can't build more than two homes per parcel. So we're having a survey or draw, 45 acre parcel that encompasses both locations.
Okay.
So I'm here to add, make a figure.
Would, would you be able to sort of graphically show what you're trying to accomplish?
Well, this is the land right now, there's homes here, but they're right by 74, they're old, middle, 40s, 50s. We want to build one here and one here, she's going to live there and my wife and I.
Wish where it's made in red.
And just to add to what you said, I asked, welcome to the neighborhood, you've been there a long time, I hadn't got opportunity, but I passed it several times today, if, if he's, where those X's are, you probably won't even see anything from the road, you probably won't know anything's back there, but this is a large tract, formerly the.
It's much larger than anything we're even considering.
Right, so, I mean, in my opinion, this is a.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion, we'll approve that, you know.
And may I get one comment in before you vote?
Okay.
So, just for the purposes of this gentleman and the, and the others that are here to appeal, y'all are simply approving them to take it to the planning office to begin the process of the subdivision? So tonight's not, the vote wouldn't be an approval of, it would simply say, we're lifting the moratorium so you may make the application. And I'll reiterate that to everyone else.
Okay. I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ellington, I have a motion second by Mr. Jones.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Same trial.
All right, we're going to circle back. Next item is contractor for Lincoln Park Lift Station. You again.
I struck out on the last one.
You ain't struck out, you just.
What's that batting?
You called time.
Okay, the Lincoln Park Lift Station, I've learned more about lift stations than I ever wanted to know, and got a peek into one a few weeks ago, but, and I do have our superintendent with us, the utility department superintendent, that can ask all the specific detail, can ask him all the specific detailed questions. We approached this with the same exact way as we did the other two, submitted an RFP. We did have a good response. We had seven contractors attended, we had three contractors that actually submitted proposals, one of them contractors is actually a local. We use same methodology in terms of establishing criteria in which we would grade these, and the result of it was that we, based on the scoring, is that our staff recommendation is to go with F.S. Scarborough, Scarborough, if I may be mispronouncing that, as the contractor that we worked with on urban design, and basically putting in a brand new lift station. As you can see, as I have in the first paragraph, according to our superintendent, somewhere in the 70s or 80s, the lift station was put in that we had. They have significant issues with that lift station. They've had two or three instances since we started this where they've had to go and basically siphon out the stuff and take it to the city treatment facility. So when it goes down, they have to manually deal with it. And that lift station only is for the housing authority there within Lincoln Park. So we put this out, we did have, as part of the proposal, we put the generator in as sort of an add-on, and then after, well, actually, the superintendent, thinking more about it, we decided, hey, yeah, we're going to get a generator put in there, and we're going to need natural gas to be aligned next to the main system. So same as with the other projects, I added a 25% contingency reserve to it that we would maintain. The contractor's proposed cost for it was 594,000, added a $150,000 estimate. The contractor's proposed cost for it was five hundred and ninety-four thousand, added a hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate, estimated, uh, reserve, business is about approximately seven hundred and forty-four thousand total for the total budget. So. Do you all have any questions?
Yes.
All right.
The only lift station we got. There's two in Lincoln Park. If we donate them to the city.
Well, I'm forced to that.
Not sell them.
After we rehab it?
No, 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 well, we ain't gonna pay it, then, then give it to them.
If the board may remember, we actually had the, our attorney look into how we acquired this lift station. We took this one in in the nineties, I think.
We don't have.
So they got one at Lincoln, circling.
The other one is at the intersection of Granville Street and Cook Street.
How much money, Alan?
So, um, totally seven hundred and forty-four thousand, I will say that if you looked at the, uh, proposed amounts, uh, they were, um, clearly the.
What was proposed cost?
We have, we have, ready.
Was there a reason for the difference, the bigger difference between the two?
And you didn't see, I didn't see any difference. We had, we did have EMC engineering, and we improved these as well, and came to the same conclusions as we did, so they went through their brain process too. So definitely we do it just like any other, is that we will get exact specifications drawn up, go through, then we'll be working closely with them, if we need EMC to get involved, we'll ask them to get involved. They come up with a final plan, um, and get the project started as soon as we can. We have an on-site natural gas power generator.
Question, uh, question for you, Jason, and potentially for him also, is, uh, is this, are we recording revenue here or is this pass rate?
We in margin.
Yeah, this is.
We, we have to have that discussion.
It doesn't serve that many people, I mean, this is, this is just for the housing authority, strictly for the housing authority.
We have to have that discussion. Does essentially, where are these funds coming from?
Splot.
Okay, so everybody's paying for that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it generates virtually no revenue.
Where everybody on the water system pays. Pays for the maintenance, so I just.
And they own county water or city water?
Their own, first water from the city.
Yeah, pass rate.
Just pass rate.
I'm telling you.
You meant to say nine is what?
I donate that thing in Tucson up there.
You can donate if they want to.
So Alan, with your finance officer hat on.
Is that Thomas and City Housing Authority?
That's housing authority, yeah.
City and Thomas Housing Authority?
Yes, that's correct. But we very clearly own it.
Pride of them.
I don't know about the pride of ours.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to sustain from voting on that proposal, I serve in the housing authority board also.
All right, so this is coming out of twenty twenty-two splot.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Almost everything we talked about tonight is coming out of twenty twenty-two splot, how many more years are left on the twenty twenty-two splot?
Five years? It's six years.
Yes, twenty twenty-seven is the.
So, and I, I did put, uh, on the second page of the, I put a little.
I, I saw where you're subtracting everything from it, so, but I'm like, that's from this year's accrual.
Yeah, I'm just taking, yes, sir, I'm just taking the balance of splot as it was, you know, just a few days ago, deducting all of the projects that would have outstanding.
And how much do we, how much do we bring in each year? This, this splot is split with the city?
It, that's correct, so we, we bring in about approximately four million.
That's right.
I just, the, the public sees us spending money tonight, I want them to know where the money's coming from. So it's, it's coming from one cent sales tax, it's coming.
That's correct.
Yeah, property tax.
Not property tax.
We, we, you know, most of, uh, we are paying for most of the Thurston Oil Project out of the water, water department's, uh, fund. But we will probably have to supplement some of that with splot as well. The fact, I think, yeah, I have it in there, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Okay. Just want me sure everybody understands.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna throw the engineer part in there. You gotta have a whole new lift station, or can you use the tank and just put new pumps in?
It's not, it, so, the new design will base on earthable humps, so.
It ain't got some earthable humps.
It does.
When was it put in?
Earth, before the natties did.
Before they obviously negotiated.
Wait before.
Because of this, because of the change in the submersible, the size of the wet well currently, it's not.
Okay, I understand that.
And it even.
Never mind.
All right.
You cleared my mind. I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Jones, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second.
That's for McRae, I mean, uh, Scarborough.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner B.
Stay.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, discussion and consideration of a budget amendment to the tax commissioner's budget for a new position.
Before I start on what I wanna, I guess, read publicly, which is in y'all's packet, may I throw some discussion points in for your discussion later on about the office? I noticed on the, uh, R, what do you call, R, P. Did it call for twenty-three hundred square feet, but this one contractor said he had two thousand figured in there, so I'm asking you, whatever you do, make sure we got enough room, you know, at least what we have now. Consider also adding in bulletproof glass, I think that's something that's needed in the office, you know, it's, it's needed down at Judicial Center. I feel we need it for the same reasons. And as far as efficiency, Jason brought up, I think moving the tax assessors, you know, in August, in a few weeks, like we're talking about. My answer to that would be, uh, way to move them when you move us, you know, we, we do interact quite a bit. So that does, you know, consider the efficiency, so, you know, you can get the building ready, and if efficiency is an issue, then just wait and move everybody at one time. That'd be the answer, but, uh, the security guard position that, uh, I'm asking for in your packet there, I'd like to read this for public record, uh, the reason I'm asking for it is, this, when this move started, uh, being talked about last year from the previous board, that was one of the first things that popped up in my head, was, uh, security, uh, not just the personnel, but of the funds, you know, as well. Transporting to the bank, you know, we discussed it at the work session that I was at a few weeks ago. And until you do it on a daily basis, you, you really don't realize how important, you know, the security part is. So that, this is kind of what brought it on, then also, you know, recently, we've had a bank robbed, out of Northside, and just a couple of weeks ago, we had an armed robbery down here at the store, guy with a hatchet goes in and threads the clerk and busts the cash register open, so it's the times we live in. So that, you know, that has all, you know, combined with what I feel is needed, uh, there at the office. I have talked with the sheriff about providing personnel, he's short-staffed, he's, he's having to put more staff in at the Justice Center, he's not able to put, uh, any type of security, even on a part-time basis for me now. So what I had considered was hiring somebody on my own, a former law enforcement officer, or shopping around to, uh, security firms, but I think the tax office is just as important, and the personnel are just as important to make sure we have the security in place that we need. So, uh, what, what good with a security guard position with tax office is a deterrent to unauthorized access and criminal activity. A visible security presence discourages individuals with criminal intentions. Helps prevent potential theft of tax funds and confidential documents. Also provides employment, public safety, I'm not gonna read all of this, you, you have your handouts, I'd just like to have it out there for public record. I think that's, uh, is common knowledge that, that you need to protect the employees and ensure public safety. And out, and to the tax funds deposit, uh, that I referred to, uh, that's of high importance to me. Bank deposits are made daily, and every deposit contains cash. We discuss the amounts that go through that office every year, it's a large amount. A se- a security guard can help ensure the protection of our personnel and funds while making these deposits. Like I said in my meeting, I take the money every day. I wouldn't have a problem with me personally transporting that money from the Drake Building to our bank. What I would have a problem with is asking one of my clerks to do it. That's, to me, that's unacceptable, that's something I won't do, okay? And like I said, the times we live in now, uh, you never can tell about people's intentions. So in conclusion, having a security guard in a building contributes to safer, more secure environment for employees and the public while helping protect funds and maintaining operational continuity. I would hope that we never face a situation such as armed robbery or harm to one of our personnel, but should something like that occur in the future, I certainly don't want to look back and say we could have provided a safer work environment, but chose not to. I also included, uh, a couple of quotes that I got from a security firm, but like I said, my intention is to, uh, hire someone that I hopefully could pay them cheaper. Now, then put together a, uh, a breakdown of the cost that's in your handout. You had that, you had that to look at? Part-time and full-time, I was intending to, uh, hire one part-time to start, we had to see how it works out, you know, as soon as, put applications out as soon as possible.
Questions for the commissioner? I got a couple, granted. If you, if you hired someone, right, one person, uh, as a full-time employee or a part-time employee, they would get days off for vacation, they would get sick time and things like that, so with just one person, I think you're gonna have some gaps in being able to have full coverage. So you have the other options of a security firm providing some, and I don't know, uh, how that works, uh, if they just make sure someone's there every day.
They do, they'll talk with them, that's what they do.
And then, um, you know, what I just thought about was, uh, I don't know what, I don't know what they do, like Pike County at their tax office, or Lamar County. I don't know what any other counties do, I mean, I, I thought about Pike, because I think theirs is right across from the bank, I don't know if they use that bank. And then, Marriwath County, their tag office and stuff, that on the, uh, square, I'm not sure where their bank is. I don't know what, I don't know what others do, I mean, have you talked to other, uh, tax commissioners?
Yeah, there's some, they have, they, they have escorted, uh, guards, uh, like Murray County, for example, they have an armed guard inside their office behind bulletproof glass, the whole office. And he's responsible for taking the deposit and all that, you know, I'm not looking for that kind of, well, you know, we do need some type of secure presence, you know? And that's why I kind of want to start part-time, see how it worked out. You know, I would want someone there, uh, definitely when we're making our deposits, whether it's that morning or that afternoon. I understand what you're saying about those gaps, you know, time off and things like that.
I don't know how much, I don't know how much money you transport, and I don't want you to say, um, and, uh, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of what options are, I mean, we're in a government building right here, right? And when you go to a lot of government buildings, there's a deputy in the building, right? And so I guess that's what they have down at the Justice Center, they have all kinds of security, we have, we don't have that here. And so, I mean, I just thought about this while we're sitting here, and like, um, I don't know what a deputy costs, you know, sometimes we have a deputy standing here, we, we know we're gonna have a, a public hearing that, you know, may be emotional. Do we know what a, a de- a deputy costs, could it be like some kind of reimbursable, like, uh, the tax commissioner reimburses the sheriff's department for a deputy being present, or is it, or is it just a whole building, right, we've got the city and the county here, I mean, if it's something between the city and the county, we could have an officer in the building. I'm just thinking out loud, I'm not, I'm not telling you what to do.
Yeah, yeah, well, no, I mean, let me throw this edge, because this, this came up in a discussion I had the other day with, uh, the sheriff and others. You know, uh, off-duty law enforcement is my main idea here, you know, somebody wants to make some extra money being up there, and, you know, already got benefits, you know, it's, you know, something to explore.
Yeah, I, I don't know how we do it here, I know in some counties, like, you, they run a roster at the sheriff's department, and you basically have the patrol car sit at your construction site or different things like that, it costs.
I'm, I'm sure there's law enforcement officers here, both the police and, and, and sheriff's department that, you know, would mind making a few extra dollars.
So I, I don't really, Andy, I don't really know, um, what the risk is, we don't know what the risk is. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to compare, you know, apples to apples, like, what are other government buildings doing?
What, what other business is doing? I go to the bank, I don't see a armed guard, bulletproof glass, when I go to Home Depot, I don't see that, when I go to Walmart, I don't see that, when I go to McDonald's, I don't see that, when I go down to the city to pay a bill, I don't see that.
I thought the same, I thought the same thing, we have the water department, what, I assume the probate judge is taking in money down there, how does that money get to the bank? Home Depot and Walmart do have arms courier bringing that.
You know, I want to refer back to one of the paragraphs about the situations that can occur in that office, you know? I can sit here and tell you about situations that occurred over the years that.
Yeah, I can, I can see somebody getting emotional about their deed or their.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, some, most everybody coming there paying taxes, they're not happy about it, and when you go placing liens on their property, they're not happy about that either. You know, I hesitate saying this, but I've been, uh, threatened when I first come on the job about being shot, okay? Not that, you know, I diffuse the situation, but things like that happen. So I guess my point is, you protect elected officials and their personnel down here at the Justice Center with, you know, law enforcement officials, and I don't feel we're any different from that. Especially when it comes to taxpayer dollars.
Taxpayer dollars don't pay for it.
That's right.
And this would go into effect after the move, or you?
I, I, I would, uh, start putting out applications, and it would start while we're still there, that's my, that's my intent.
So your request tonight is for a budget amendment?
That's what I was.
Do you have the figures, do you have those figures in the handout?
Yeah, we have them. I, I'm just thinking out loud, like, I think there's multiple options that, you know, could benefit maybe more than just your office if we wanted to go that route, or if we want to go that route or not.
Well, I mean, that would, that's a good idea. I mean, when everybody gets moved up to the Drake, you have someone outside to provide security for everybody. I mean, there's times people go up to the assessors' office and they're confrontation. And, you know, just like I ended a while ago, this is, I don't want to look back and say, hey, we should have done something.
Yeah, I just, you know, no budget season's right around the corner. I feel like this could be something to address during the budget process.
Yeah, because it might not just be for you.
Yeah, we spread out amongst.
But how many get this, the salary?
What's that?
How many come up with the salary?
Well, I pulled out $25 an hour max if I hired, you know, somebody like maybe a law enforcement official that wants to work, you know, off-duty or whatever. And then I base that also on the security firm quotes of $35 an hour. You know, I wouldn't, you know, that part-time, yeah.
I'm thinking Home Depot and those places for a part-time service, like police officer. The rate is like $40, $45 an hour.
I mean, the Four Horsemen quote that I got here is $35 an hour. And I'm not necessarily looking for-
Is that an armed?
Well, that's armed.
Armed.
Yeah.
What's our insurance say about that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. I would rather have some options in front of me that we can, you know, weigh out, you know? And I, I'm kind of personally leaning towards, you know, either a bump in the sheriff's department or, you know, an agreement with the city where we pay part of a police officer, you know, someone who is a law enforcement officer. If there's any liability, we're kind of covered. I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, so, I think, to your point, if we, if we try to lay out some different courses of action like that, we could look at in the budget in a month or two.
Similar to the SROs that we do at the school, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I agree.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready for my commotion. I make a motion. We did not. Just budget amendment.
I have a motion to deny.
Second.
Have a second?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bates?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Alton?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
So it's to be picked up in budget season?
We can come right back at it. It's not, it's not like a zoning thing that can't come back for a year or something.
Budget season's right around.
Yeah, I think we just need to really lay out what's a criteria, what is a capability that we're-
That wasn't my motion.
We denied it right now for this year.
That wasn't my motion.
Fair enough.
Okay. All right. Discussion and consideration of appointment to Regional four EMS board.
We got one.
We got one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Foster.
Richard Shane Foster.
We got open positions?
Yes, it's been open for a year.
Is this the position vacated by the hospitals?
Yes.
Moving forward, since that's the only one, I make a motion to approve. What's the guy's name?
Shane Foster.
Have a motion.
Second.
Mr. Jones, a second. Commissioner Biggs.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bates?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Alton?
Yes.
We're getting there. Discussion and consideration of an exemption for the moratorium on Indian Oil Subdivision's real property in Upstate County established in resolution 14 dot 2025 for parcel 042C095 located on Windwood Drive. Who's presenting that?
Windbrook.
Windbrook Drive, I'm sorry.
And the thing, there should be, there should be a graphic representation of this one in the folder.
All right, I have everything pulled up. You just let me know which one you want.
The last one you pulled up.
Okay.
And that's one with what, one acre lot right there?
Yes, so this is-
And there, there's no sewer over there?
So this is a request for the moratorium, and this would be the landowner's preference. This option here, I provided two options. The, the triangle that you see there that's not in red, the small triangle that goes across the bottom of the ring there.
There's something.
Yeah, that right there. That's preventing those lots from being able to touch the road. So this would, in the purchase of that, we're, we're looking at purchasing that strip of land. That's where all this comes from. So we're going to purchase that strip of land, and then we will attach it to the right side, and it'll give that road frontage to Windbrook, which will create, I think, a better situation. We want to have a landlocked lot. And then we'll take the lot at the top, and that lot will have frontage on 19, and we'll combine those two. It'll come across, and it'll have road frontage on Windbrook as well. So it does away with the, the landlocked piece that would be at the bottom of that, if that makes sense. It does away with that landlot, and it gives it, it just makes more sense for it to be that, have that road frontage in both directions. And then it gives you the opportunity to have a dwelling on Windbrook, which makes sense. It would be a light dwelling with a like-sized lot, be a one-acre lot, just like the rest of the lots in Windbrook. Give the comps an opportunity to have something that's newer. And so that would be, that would be the request to change, you know, to be able to divide that as it, as the red is outlined.
What's the current zoning in this area?
R2.
R2. Even the one that touches 19.
I want to see Scenario A.
So Scenario A just makes two rectangles. It gives both those lots road frontage, but it doesn't combine the other lots, and it doesn't give you the one-acre lot to build on.
There's a can of water there.
Can't really water.
Yep.
Water, no sewer. I'm looking at all the tax mail.
Mr. Chairman, in response to Commissioner Watson's question.
The frontage on 19 is C2, but Windbrook is R2.
Yeah, that's right.
And then just for further knowledge, the two lots in front of that, so that you see the, the corner lot is commercial there, and then you have three home lots. I don't know if you can see that. But two, all of that is family land. So if you connect all of that and do away with that line in the middle, you'll have all family land there, and then the property in front of will also all be family land.
The problem is the zoning of those two different zonings on that parcel.
Yes, that's because in the 90s, they came through and did that zoning. But that lot, these are very old lots, so that, that lot is just leftover from that zoning. They gave it a, they gave, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they gave all lots like 50-foot frontage on 19 with commercial. So those houses are 50-foot in there. I mean, I guess they would be commercial, but they're used as residential and had them since 1930. Hi, we have a lot of those residential uses that are in commercial on 19 that continue to be residential, and we understand that these particular, I didn't investigate these particular parcels, but that's the typical story along this area in 19.
So the first building, that's the old motorcycle repair shop.
So that corner would be the only true commercial lot that's 100% commercial. The rest of them share a double zoning because they've been pre-located here for so long.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the planning director a question?
Yes.
In this instance, in Scenario A, it's, it would be considered a simple split, and that's held, that's done administratively in your office, correct?
Not even administratively, just allowed to have-
Gotcha.
In what scenario is this area be?
Anything.
I think most of we, you know, this is more simple than cutting out and having a one-acre lot that we weren't, we wouldn't allow anyway to approve. They, they just bought the triangle at the bottom, and they're just trying to combine that with this other. So I say we, you know, approve, approve that on Scenario A.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, Commissioner Jones, to approve Scenario A. I have a second from Commissioner Alton.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bates?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Alton?
Yes.
All right. Next item, discussion and consideration of an exemption from the moratorium on Indian Oil Subdivision's real property in Upstate County established in resolution 14 dot 2025, parcel 096030 located in Rest Haven Road.
Hi.
Hi.
So my wife and I currently own 31 acres, and we're selling the house that's on it. And we couldn't get any interest on the whole, the house and the whole 31 acres. But our neighbor came to us and said we would like to buy the back 20 acres. And so what we're asking is to be allowed to split.
Oh, I know where he is. You live right behind me. Your property touches mine.
You own all the pecan trees?
Yep.
I'll be darned.
He said, I like your pecan.
I was about to say, is he trying to buy it?
Mm-hmm. I'd go for sale.
So we had a surveyor come in, and they split it up for us, and the back 21 acres that touches his property would go to 350 Rest Haven, and then the remaining 10 acres plus the house would still be 346 Rest Haven.
Yeah, it's going to, it's not going to have any road frontage to it. It's just going to be connected to some of the front lots or the side lot. And this is Rest Haven Road right here, guys. And then this, this, this comes up, and he's just splitting off this front piece of that land and putting a 20-acre parcel behind it and selling. There's no road frontage involved. It's just going to combine with these other lots this other man owns.
Are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead. You know, because, I mean, it doesn't, it's being connected to other pieces of property. You're not looking to, you know, move road frontage or anything else.
Simple split.
Simple split.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Jones. I have a second.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Watson.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bates?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Alton?
Yes.
Okay. Next up, discussion and consideration of an exemption from the moratorium on Indian Oil Subdivision's real property in Upstate County established in resolution 14 dot 25, parcel 036006 Charlie located on Goshen Road. Mr. Long?
Good evening. So we, as a family, purchased 50 acres on Goshen Road. It was me, my parents, my sister and her fiance. And we went under contract February 28th. Shortly thereafter, I think it was March 14th, the first 100-day moratorium went into effect. I, you know, we decided to proceed. You know, right before the March 14th, we'd already had a different plaque created. It kind of had Mr. Doug's preliminary blessing, but we just had to add some notes to the survey. Well, then March 14th, 100-day moratorium went into effect, so they kind of pushed that off. We went ahead and closed on it in a land loan, which has a little bit higher interest rate than a construction loan or permanent mortgage. And basically, that 100-day turned into 180-day. So we are, you know, requesting an exception to apply to file a plaque similar to this. If you guys approve it, you know, we made sure we had 200-foot of road frontage, minimum width of each parcel is at 150-foot. It's out in the current ordinance of AR land, and I feel that it's conforming to the neighborhood based on, you know, several other parcels that are on Goshen Road. I wrote them down. If y'all want me to list them. But like I said, I feel like it's conforming to the neighborhood, and that's what we're requesting.
This is my neighbor's, they're always here. Yeah, I have looked at his property and it meets all the requirements. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Biggs. A motion is seconded. A motion is seconded by Commissioner Alton.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bates?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Alton?
Yes.
Okay. And now we're going to circle back to-
That's the last one?
That was it. We were almost done. We were going to circle back to the tax commissioner.
We should start first here.
Okay. Discussion and consideration of the contract for the Drake Building renovations for the tax commissioner's office. So back to that, and we were just trying to figure out the vault situation.
Yeah, I actually found something on the, in the packet under attachment G, I think it is, that, that talks about a vault. So the vault is mentioned in our RFP packet attached to G. It's a little vaguely mentioned, but it's mentioned. And it's, it's like a, if you look at that, it's like a sketch if I'm, if I'm looking at it correctly.
it's like a sketch if I'm, if I'm looking at it correctly. So in that regard, what I'm saying is, we, we essentially said we want a quote with a vault involved.
Okay.
That was a suggestion, and the one quote came in did not have that, so it's really not a proper quote or a proper RFP.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is, is attachment G essentially the, um, the floor plan, the, just the conceptual floor plan?
Ah, I had it pulled up, I, I thought I would maybe go right back to it, but of course I can't.
There you go, right.
Yeah. Okay. But, yeah, I think if we could hook it up for the low bidder to provide some feedback, 'cause he, I think he has a little more input in terms of the differences of the square footage.
I've, I've never done a bid before, so I don't know how appropriate that is.
Yeah, if we have questions, then, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you find it, if you wanna clarify something.
Alright, well, Commissioner Jones was, uh, your reviewer, so...
Yeah, I didn't, I did not catch the vault one.
Okay.
Uh, the only other thing was the timeline.
Yep.
Uh, it was just... One was, like I said, one of them was done by September, and then Flint would be done by January.
I'd be glad to speak to that, if you'd allow me to.
That's up to him.
Yeah, I, I, I'd wish for him to come up, 'cause...
It's basically August. I don't care who you are, you're not gonna do that in forty-five days. It's not possible. The design is not even finalized, the tax commissioner himself would like to review and sit down and go through the process. They're gonna find stuff in those walls, they're gonna find problems in that building, it's an old building. Because we have done remodels in this building in the past, and every time we tear something out, we find a problem, and nobody gets there. Something was covered up. So it's always, it's never...
Such, right.
I don't think it's possible. I think it's an unrealistic timeline that they put in there to get a job. Um, in the world I live in, things change. Uh, the scope of work changes, the problems arise, we try to build timelines that are realistic, and then they... So that's my approach to a timeline. If I tell you I can do it in three months, and I don't deliver, you're mad. If I tell you I can do it in five, I won't deliver in three. That's what you're reacting to.
Alright, so...
Alright, Chase, can you address the vault situation?
Yeah, so in the proposal, now, I don't know how well y'all looked at the drawing that we were provided to, to work off of, but you can't even read what's in there as far as like, you can read the detail in the words, but you can't read the drawing, right? So in the, in this RFP, the request for proposal, not a request to bid, um, it was listed as things that you wanted, that you would like to see in there. Well, it also said it was twenty-three hundred square feet. When our architect came on the site and measured everything that was here, it was nineteen hundred and fifty-six square feet, and unless we eliminate the ladies' restrooms, which if we do that, then that opens a can of worms, 'cause where are they going? Uh, so, there was not the square footage there that was originally called out in the plan, so we had to, something had to go. So you sacrificed office space, vault space, conference rooms, kitchens, what is... The other problem with the vault is what is a vault? Is it just a locked door? Is it a fire rated room? Is it thirty, sixty, ninety minutes? Is it two hours? Like, what is that? There's no...
Good information.
And that, the price to build, nothing to two-hour fire rate it can swing, you know, like this. We're talking about safe doors, is it just a, a locked door? So, can we make it happen? Sure, but the tax commissioner's concerned about the square footage, and we already don't have the square footage we thought we had to start with. So what, what are we giving up?
Okay, I, I gotta get a question to get to that. Andy's gone, man. But, I mean, how big a vault are we talk, what does he have now? I mean, are we taking in that much money? We gotta have a, a bank vault. I mean, I just...
It's something bigger than a gun vault.
I mean, I'm not, it's not a three million dollar budget, and I don't have a bank vault. The farmers pay cash.
Well, good for the last. You have a secure office. Why can't you go?
Well, you gotta lock stuff up, I mean, you gotta lock it.
It's safe.
The question, sorry, the question too is, are we worried about fire or are we worried about theft? Like, what are we, what are we certainly involved? Because we can attack...
We're worried about fire. Yeah, but I mean, sometimes you don't, you just don't make every deposit. You make your deposit by two or something, and stuff comes in till five, you know?
To confess, eh?
Yeah, yeah, but I mean...
But, so this proposal is to set a budget for a certain amount, and Andy will get to work with the design, and they can work in a safe, a vault, or whatever, into it.
Yeah, I mean, that was our intent when we were doing this.
And if it's some fireproof thing, it'll be higher cost, basically what you're saying.
Well, I mean, if it's just a safe, I mean, oh, we can buy a safe, it's not a...
Alright, so, first question. How many square feet does he have now? Anybody know?
Not well, but...
You know, is this space gonna be equal to, or bigger or lesser? It's gonna be bigger, this space is gonna be bigger.
I think so.
Okay.
I think this space would be bigger.
Bigger is better, you know?
In some cases.
Yeah.
If I'm not speaking on the specs of your fire rating, motion, your vault, especially like at the center, there at one hour, that's when your block falls. So that's just to clear that up, that, that adjusts the, if you're walking up the staircase, it leaves up there at one hour fire rate.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve Flint contracting for the bounty plus the contingency. Second.
I have a motion from, to approve by Commissioner Ellington, I have a second, Commissioner Watson.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Motion case.
Alright.
I love it.
Alright, we got final comments. Commissioner Biggs?
Yes, I'm always, no, no.
I would like to add, just on our work sessions of next month, we just talked about the, uh, and probably it's benefit, you know, right now, a new hire coming on, we give them twenty hours of sick time, would have to work a whole year in order to get vacation time. So maybe we can fix it where they can start to get vacation time after the nine a day or higher, if not the whole four hours, at least twenty hours. That way, that'll give them forty hours for the whole year.
Okay.
Work session, right.
For work session?
Yeah.
Alright, Commissioner Ellington?
Uh, I, I just simply make a request to, to staff, and, you know, don't ever bring another, make a bid and bring it to us. We need to design what we want. You put people that are bidding, you know, you, you, it's hard to compare apples and oranges, it's just, uh, if we know what we want, we need, you need to have it drawn up, and we need to give it to the contractors and let them bid on it, and that way, things aren't getting left out, getting put in. You, you can't compare, when you just say, "Hey, Watson, I got, I need twenty-two hundred square foot, go give me your best design." That's, that's, that's not good. That's not good for the people bidding on, it's not good for the county. We need to know what we want and bid it. I, I will vote no on every one of those that come before me in the future.
It's on YouTube. Commissioner Jones?
Hey, look, I appreciate everybody that hung with us, uh, all you people in YouTube land, um, we, there's a lot we need to discuss, you know, animal control and everything else. Hopefully we had that on a work session soon. Um, we're kinda behind the eight ball in a lot of things, and, and I feel like somebody's running the table on them, but, uh, this, this has been something I've been thinking about for, ever since I've been on here, and it's that lift station, you know? What, it, I got a question, and I, I would like an answer for it, is, even if we, when we upgrade it, what's the cost to operate that thing every year?
As far as maintenance comes?
Yeah, maintenance and utilities and everything else.
Right now, it's very high.
Yeah, so, even if we fixed it, donated it to the city, got it off our books totally, you know, we're not in the sewer business, we don't own sewer. The city's the only one that owns sewer in this county, and so why do we have a, a lift station for the Thomaston Housing Authority that we have to pay for?
Because your predecessors took it off.
And plus, it sits on kind of property.
Yeah, so...
Some kind of property.
Yeah, well, we can donate that to it, but, you know, okay, I'm, I'm sure they wouldn't take it like it is, but we'll talk about that sometime in the work session, too.
Okay.
And I appreciate everybody, you know, that, that hung in there with us, and all the restaurants are gonna be closed, except for Whataburger nailed twenty-four hours.
Commissioner Watson?
Yeah, uh, one thing I, I just don't wanna lose sight of, I think I mentioned it at our, our last meeting, um, and because we approved the phase two concession stand, I still want us to try to put together a master plan for the entire ball fields. I think that'd be a great project for the rec board to be working on simultaneously. Um, what we're doing out there with the concession stand and the phase one works, it's not going to waste, 'cause we're gonna have to maintain and keep fields while we potentially improve and increase our number of fields, so I'd just like to keep that at the top of our list to talk about and try to give them some direction to move forward with it.
Okay. County attorney?
You go first by flaws, Frank. Well, we need to, we need to address flaws in our workshop, work session as well. I mean, that's something that's, we're staring down a barrel on that, and we need to, if we're gonna do something, we need to do it.
Okay.
When is the deadline? Anybody know?
It's like September, I think they have it on the November ballot.
Yes, that's correct.
So, we got a lot of work.
Yeah.
September the fifth.
September the fifth? We don't have one work session between now and then?
Yeah.
I'm not even sure it's possible at this point.
Yeah.
No, it's possible.
It's possible. Okay.
On our end.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Jessica, you ready?
He took care of it.
Alright, and, uh, county manager, floor is yours.
Brian, Ben, Chase, Alan, Slade, Paul, Doug, Jessica, Eve. Ben, Dan, James, Paul, Chris. Thank you.
For what?
For a great seven years.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, very much.
We hate to see you go. But we understand why, and I think all the county loves you, so...
Well, I love that.
You're lying.
And remember, in a couple days, I just become a squeaky constituent.
So you're hoping to ask me about that?
And I live in that man's district.
Put you in the city, yeah.
Alright, so, um, I'll just close out my remarks by saying, uh, thank you, it's been a pleasure, uh, the short time that I've got to work with you, and, um, I really appreciate, you know, um, all your counsel, and, uh, hope we stay in touch. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Ellington?
Second.
Commissioner Jones? All favor.
I don't make my motion.
Jane, I sure am loving that John Deere.
Well, you didn't make Rusty up enough in there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you should've made them up.
I didn't know, I didn't know y'all did the dealers.
Yeah, well, sometimes we have, we're not essentially, but in daytime, yeah. But Rusty's pretty good about getting it.
I'm telling you, I don't know why I ever had a loan, frankly.
Well, Washington, you will never go back.
Yes, it's faster and it's powerful. You're gonna lose any little shit, fuck, you know?
Gets it done, though.
And, and you can roll it in so far.